So while I stand before you here now, I am recognized the absolute blessing that I have in order to be here and I will fight nonstop. This work is not new. We know that. And across the entire city over the past two weeks, we have seen that it is possible for us to keep our own community safe. In North Minneapolis, as the buildings were being broken and burned by white supremacists and extremists, MPD was nowhere to be found. And with all due respect to the fire department, they were putting us on wait lists as black-owned businesses burned. So we had to come together ourselves in order to protect our community, be able to protect the little bit of community wealth that we've been able to build. And so now even the loudest police fans in my ward who have been vocally against the work that I've been doing, even they are saying, "This is clearly broken." Even they see it now. They're pausing to reflect on the reality of the times when they have called the police and the kind of service that they got. They're reflecting on the fact that they were nowhere to be found as we were in crisis. While we have no paradigm for policing that is not rooted in white supremacy, we do have a paradigm and a way to have community safety that is rooted in community and justice. We've seen that all across the city the past two weeks. And so you'll have to forgive me right quick. I will get a little bit prefessorial. It is possible for us to do this because we have a model called the Public Health Approach to Public Safety. What that does is it looks at violence from an epidemiological perspective, that it is a disease that spreads interpersonally and intergenerationally. So therefore, it can be prevented and treated. Even here in Minneapolis, we as a city council have operationalized strategies that are working. We have seen a precipitous drop of gang involvement because folks are being offered a ramp, an off-ramp from that life by community members. The reality is that folks have been doing this work for decades but not getting paid for it. And now is the time for us as a city to start paying the community members who have been doing this work for decades and need to get paid. All that money has been going into the police department and what have we gotten in return? Pain, trauma, and hurt. It is time for us to get behind community and to get behind the strategies that we know work. And you have a majority of the city council here today, ready to back that up. Thank you, everybody.
(Applause)
We're here live in Powderhorn Park here in Minneapolis. This stream is cutting into two.
Decades of police reform efforts have proved that the Minneapolis Police Department cannot be reformed.
(Applause)
And they will never be held accountable for their actions. It will never be held accountable for their actions.
We are here today to begin the process of ending the Minneapolis Police Department.[254.12][254.12](Applause)
And creating new transformative model for cultivating safety in Minneapolis.
We recognize that we don't have all the answers to what a police-free future looks like, but we know that the community does.
We are committing to engaging with every willing community member in Minneapolis over the next year to identify what safety looks like for you.[304.22][304.22](Applause)
We will be taking intermediate steps towards ending the MPD through the budget process and...
And other policy and budget decisions over the coming... I want to say it right. And other policy and budget decisions over the coming weeks and months.[335.12][335.12](Applause)
All of us on this stage support this statement and we stand with the people of Minneapolis and fighting for a safer community.[348.22][348.22](Applause)
(Crowd cheering)
Pretty historic statement made. Nine city council members up in the front, raising their fists.[363.12][363.12](Crowd chanting) D5 MPD! Saying they're gonna take the intermediate steps towards ending the Minneapolis Police Department.[371.47][371.47](Crowd chanting) D5 MPD! What's happening here live in Powderhorn Park here in South Minneapolis.[375.62][375.62](Crowd chanting) D5 MPD! Thousands are out here.[380.12][380.12](Crowd chanting) D5 MPD!
So, that was a big one, y'all. We just made history, y'all.[385.62][385.62](Applause) And as many of them, as they spoke encouraged, this is the beginning, right? This is a continuous fight. If you got questions, if you need answers from your council members, they right here, y'all. If you got some tension with them, actually, community-led safety means we address tension with each other together, okay?[412.34][412.34](Applause) If you want to hold them accountable, you know where they work. So, there are big questions ahead of us about how to dismantle the police department and build up the resources that really keep us safe. But there's also so much knowledge right here in Minneapolis, in this park today and across the country. The world is watching us, Minneapolis. It's time for every single person here to roll up our sleeves, find our role, and start learning, dreaming, and planning together.[449.62][449.62](Applause) I want to thank our council members who are here, just deeply from the bottom of my heart. I know this takes a lot of courage. I know black organizers and POC organizers got y'all here, so don't, you know, don't let that story get twisted in the media, y'all. And y'all are here, and that's critical. And before I pass it over for actually, community members to be in small groups and talk about what comes next, I just need to give a lot of love to the young, black people, the queer people, the women[489.81][489.81](Applause) who never get seen, who never get recognized, who would have been here every single moment for believing when someone told us we were too radical, like we didn't have a plan, like we didn't know what that anxiety felt like every time we saw a police officer and knew something was wrong about that?[513.12][513.12](Applause) Y'all kept fighting. And y'all let everybody else in this park here today and you're leading everybody else across the country in the globe. And I am blessed and humbled to be in this fight with y'all.[527.62][527.62](Applause) So we're gonna take a couple breaths together, because healing justice is what it's about, too. So I want to invite you to close your eyes or drop your gaze. Invite you to get in touch with this ground that our bodies are blessed to be able to be on. And I want you to think about the young person in your life who gets to grow up in a city without police. I want you to think about what's gonna be different about their life. I want you to think about what you all helped make possible today. I want you to think about the smile that they have when they get to walk to the grocery store and never have to fear for their life again. And together, let's take three big breaths. Calling in our power, calling in the wisdom of our ancestors, calling in the mandate that we have to future generations. Together, breathe in and out. Again, breathe in our possibility. Breathe out false barriers that may try to hold us back. Breathe in new possibilities for safety in our community. And breathe out doubt, because we got each other. So now what we're gonna do, because I'm an organizer, oh yeah, shout out to the organizers, because that's how we got here, period. Folks like to act like it's just random, like we randomly decided to go to Jacob Fry's house yesterday.[665.70][665.70](Applause) No, I have no reason to be on that block, other than to harass that man. So, what I want you to do is turn to small groups, maybe it's your family, maybe it's other folks on your block that you're sitting next to, and maybe it's a new friend, a new homie. And what I want you to talk about, we're gonna give you all about like 15, 20 minutes, is what questions do you have? Because we know you got questions. What are your hopes? And what is one thing you will do to move this work forward? Because again, this is on all of us. We can't rely on black and brown bodies to keep this fight forward. We know we're gonna be led by them, period.[707.12][707.12](Applause) But it's on all of us. And then, because you know, receipts are real, y'all. We need to actually know that y'all are in it with us. What I want to ask the small group is like, pick a leader. Oh my God, I love how like, organizer this is. You know, we have a leader poll movement. So pick someone in your group to email us your answers, okay? So you can email them to reclaimtheblock@gmail.com with Sunday Community Meeting in the subject line. Like, this is how we do it. Google's gonna get, oh, it influx. So we're gonna take 15 to 20 minutes. And before, you know, I move on, I just want to make sure folks know who really got us here. Shout out to Reclaim the Block and Black Visions, who have been calling for the defunding of the police for a minute now. And we are grateful that you are all here with us. All right. So like we do, turn to a partner, turn to someone next to you, and talk about what questions, what hopes you have, and make sure you email us your answers. Thank you. And then we're gonna come back and we're gonna hear from another one of my Minneapolis favorites, Janada. She's gonna bless us with her artistry and her fly outfit, y'all. I can't wait for you to see it. And we'll close out.
Welcome to see you, Ben Nico.
Yeah, you too, man.
How's it going?
Good, good.
How'd that arm heal?
Yeah, it's healing.
Way better. Looked like someone bit you, dude.
Right, right.
Someone saw it, I was like, someone bit you? He's like, no, he just got shot. I'm like, what?
What?
I tried to grab an interview or two during this period of time of 20 minutes.
years in a lot of different areas. You can talk about who you are if you want, or you don't have to.
Hey. What up?
Either way, I want to know what you thought about what happened today here at Powderhorn
You wanna talk at all?
Uh, not right now, but in a minute.
Park just a few minutes ago.
Okay.
Hi.
You look good right now with the clothes and...
I'm gonna take this off.
Yes.
I know, your whole outfit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sophia, my name is Sophia.
But I will say something. I will say something.
What time, when?
I am a core team member and staff at Black Visions Collective.
After I read my call.
Oh, after I read, okay. I was trying to fill in the time where people are just talking, so I'll grab some interviews
What happened here today? Well, it's really a shift into the first steps of defunding the police.
or something. Thank you. (Music)
It's going to be a long journey, but we also know that this is the beginning and not the end. And what we're waiting for and what we're gonna be pushing for is continual transformation into safety-led solutions and forevermore the indefinite defunding of the police.
So we had city council members talking about changing the budgetary process, changing some of the other policies. Do you have, like, so there was like, it was nine city council members here?
Yep.
Do you have hopes that that can really, really happen in this next period of time?
Yes, I do have hope. I mean, I know that it's going to happen. I also have accountability. You know, we just saw it, we just heard it, and we as organizers will hold them accountable to the end.
So this has been a process for many years where people have been pushing for the disbandment, or defunding first of all, right?
Yep.
So, we hear some alternative ideas. What is your, I think we talked about this a little tiny bit too, maybe yesterday. What is your thoughts on what's the pathway forward? We have some ideas that were talked about. What is your favorite ideas?
Oh my gosh. Well, I'm a fan of alternatives in general, that's kind of my vibe. But you know, I honestly think that there's a lot that exists already, and I think that transitioning funds into stuff that exists where they don't have to rely and they aren't relying upon the police is very important. I actually think that through this pandemic and this time, folks have actually bloomed in neighborhoods, neighborhood safety-led solutions, and also like cultural groups and different areas have also bloomed from this. And I am very excited to hear and see what comes from that as well.
Yeah. What is your feeling, there were thousands of people who witnessed what just happened? It seemed pretty historic. What is your feeling about all of that?
My heart is skipping beats. I actually think that this is a moment in time that is not only here for Minnesota for life, but is also going to stand the test of time and also leads the way for other places in the United States and beyond the United States, in Turtle Island, to exist and find their path into defunding their police and the police state overall. And hopefully beyond that. Because policing in general is not a thing that needs to exist. It's not safe for any of us.
Thank you for that. So, as far as the next step forward for protests or gatherings from the Black Visions Collective or from beyond, as far as you know, what are they?
You'll just have to see. You know, I believe in security culture, and we will see how this all transitions and transforms and how people follow through. And yeah, it's to be continued. And it's gonna be a long journey, and we're in for the long haul.
Anything else you want to say?
Um, no. I want to say hi, Dad, because I know you're watching.
Thank you. Here you go, if you want some.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Is my soul alive?
Uh, yeah. Sweet. Here, I got this for you, come on. And I just wiped this down too, but...
Yeah, no worries.
Okay. So hey, what did we just witness, man? It seemed like, uh, it seemed like this was sort of historic?
Yeah, just a little bit, just a little bit.
Yeah, just a little bit historic. Why? Explain what happened.
Yeah, I mean, after weeks of protesting, weeks of black and brown organizers bearing their soul, what we just witnessed was the Minneapolis City Council announcing to all of us, to the world, livestream, that they are going to dismantle the Minneapolis Police Department and replace that with transformative, community-led safety. That is a historic, historic, historic moment.
Yeah. So, it was nine city council members?
Nine out of 12, technically, yes.
Nine out of 12. How did that happen?
Yeah. Honestly, I mean, I also organized with Reclaim the Block, so it's been a lot of pressure. It's been since five years coming, right? We started with Jamar Clark, and then even like after Philando, kept pushing. Reclaim the Block formed two years ago, talking about diverting money from the police, not even dismantling, just diverting some money. Last year, we tried to stop the $8.2 million increase, and unfortunately, we were unsuccessful. And now George Floyd died, so that we had the opportunity and the momentum to actually create societal change.
Yeah, I've heard multiple times, it's two years too late.
Exactly.
People have been fighting for this for a long time, and now George Floyd is dead.
Exactly.
So this now, are you hopeful that this will prevent another death?
Yeah, definitely. So just because we're dismantling the police system does not mean that violence is gone, right? We also, we already know that historical and generational trauma exists. So what we're saying is that this is the only path forward to the liberation of all people. We have to dismantle the systems in which we live under to gain that black liberation, that liberation that we all seek. So, understanding that, right? It's like, it's not like there's no one else that's gonna be murdered ever, but understanding this is the way that we can start to heal the generational trauma that white supremacy, capitalism, policing, surveillance has enacted on us in the first place.
Wow, okay. Thank you for that. So, when it comes to your favorite next steps, your favorite alternatives, what are they?
Exactly, yeah. I think transformative justice is necessary, public education is necessary. White supremacy is not abolished just because we abolish the police. We have to actually learn about what privilege and oppression is. We have to read radical black visionaries of the past. And we also have to educate ourselves on what abolition means, and also what does it mean to be a white person? What does it mean to be black? What does it mean to grow up with systemic oppression? What does it mean to come up? What does capitalism mean, right? So all of these things are interconnected, and we have to learn about that first before we can then send that to our communities as well.
All right, okay. Word, word. So, we have now, that's nine city council members out of the 12. We have them actually saying that they're going to change budgetary, make budgetary moves and make policy processes changed. Now, how do they get held accountable to what they've said?
Yeah, the only way to do that is with community, right? So I mean, they said this on live fucking TV. Like, there's multiple news channels from all over the world that are here. So, the only way that they can be held accountable is if we held them accountable. So, people in Minneapolis, Minneapolis residents have to come out, they have to continue to join our community process, because community-led safety without community is just another form of the police, right? That's not what we want. We want to have the autonomy of saying what our safety looks like in our communities.
A quick question off of that. We heard Arianna say she doesn't want, they don't want the block parties, I mean, the Neighborhood Watch to become even more authoritative than the police.
Exactly. And the only way, the only way that we're going to dismantle that is if we actually learn what oppression looks like, right? We actually learn what's code, right? Like, when we talk about racism, when we talk about white supremacy, that's embedded in us all. That's embedded in white people, that's embedded in Asian-American folks, anti-blackness is global, right? So the only way that we're going to make sure that community-led safety doesn't turn into another policing system is if we actually engage with our neighbors and engage with the ones around us.
Thank you for that. So it sounds like you've been studying this abolitionist framework for a while.
Yeah, definitely.
Where can people find, if they don't really know much about this and like, they're sort of scared, we even sort of heard like, if you're sort of scared about what this means without police, where do you think people can, it's not really on you to tell people, but what's some reading that got you to where you are?
Yeah, definitely. Asadush Khor is a big one, right? Also, Angela Davis has a really, really good book around the prison industrial complex and abolition, right? You can watch, you can even watch 13th Amendment on Netflix if you're not someone who likes to read. There are so many things, so many books out there, so much media made by black people for black people.
One last question, I'll let you get back. Alternative to the jailing system, to incarceration, what does that look like?
Exactly, that's a good question. I mean, no one should be put in cages. We understand that the reason that people are in prison is for rehabilitation, but that never actually works. So what we're saying is that we don't have all the answers to those questions, but also, understanding and knowing the problem, to get to a solution is the first point. So, understanding how do we actually have transformative justice when we're talking about rehabilitation, when we're talking about generational violence, right? That's what transformative justice is. Getting to the root of the problem to solve the issue in the community.
Yes, for sure. Yeah, maybe I'll just talk via channel.
And prisons don't do that.
Okay, word. Thank you so much. Anything else you'd want to say? Yeah, let's get back together again.
No, shout out to Black Visions Squad, everyone out there, appreciate y'all.
Yep, yep. So again, we're here live in Minneapolis.
And keep the fight.
There's still community meetings going on.
This is a global uprising, right? This is not just Minneapolis, this is not just the United States.
You heard, it was a pretty historic announcement earlier today.
We have folks all over the globe who are calling for the end of policing as we know
See some of the meetings, this is like circle groups, circle groups.
it, and we gotta keep it up in the localities and the communities that we live in.
Thank you for your support.
So keep up the fight.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Circle groups all over. That was organizer Lucci. And the circle groups are discussing what a police-free looks like, a police-free future I'm sorry.
(Crowd cheering)
looks like, what it looks like to have the police disbanded, and what it looks like to have something in replacement or in alternative to a police department. So that's what's happening behind us, or in front of the screen during those moments, what's happening. Here's another circle.
(Crowd cheering)
Discusses.
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 (Crowd cheering)
It's good to, it's good to really, for real, meet you.
Yes, for sure. Yeah, maybe I'll just talk via channel.
Yeah, let's get back together again.
Yep, yep.
So again, we're here live in Minneapolis. There's still community meetings going on. You heard, it was a pretty historic announcement earlier today.
Let's see some of the meetings, this is like circle groups, circle groups. Uh, thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Circle groups, uh, all over. And the circle groups are discussing what, what, uh, what a police-free looks like, a police-free future looks like? What it looks like to have the police disbanded? Um, and what it looks like to have something in replacement or in alternative to a police department? So that's what's happening behind us, or in front of the screen in a moment, that during those moments, what's happening? Um, here's another circle.
Listen, you look buckin' a mother.
Would you wanna talk though?
What you gonna ask me about?
Uh, what you just witnessed?
Well, I didn't witness anything.
Oh, you weren't here?
Uh, well, nah. Okay, I just left the mental hospital, to be honest, bro. Like, a week ago, and I kinda don't really, I don't really, I'm not in tune with the politics. I know some fucked up shit happened. We have to like frame something, like, what did you ask him right now?
Uh, I'm live right now, so like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna mess with people if you don't wanna be.
Oh, well, well, well.
Right here, I'll come back to you, uh.
Oh, yeah, man, I appreciate it.
Time to go have another interview real quick. I know you're super busy, would you wanna share any words real quick?
Yeah, of course, with y'all, of course.
Sweet, sweet, sweet. Um, I just wiped this down, let me give you, uh, let me give you some more wipe down if you want.
Can I, do you want me to be up on the hill a little bit higher or something?
Yeah, of the work. Um, here you go, you wanna take that for yourself or? I just wiped it down, but I wanna make sure you're good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying, I feel like I've been passing over.
Yeah, there's so much, yeah.
Also for yourself, man.
Oh, I know, right?
Yes.
I get, I get, I get Rona scared for sure.
Oh, no, Rona, get outta here.
Um, you can say who you are, I think you already sort of mentioned it on the stream. What did we just witness today, it seemed pretty historic? Um, can you give your rundown of what happened?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, my name is Candace Montgomery, I'm the Director of Black Visions, as well part of Reclaim the Block. And, uh, my rundown of what just happened is we saw the power and force of community, and community organizing in particular coming into play. Um, and we saw our council members make a bold statement and a commitment to, in this year, defunding MPD and transitioning to something new.
Yeah, so if, I think you even, you were the one that mentioned it's been happening for years, this work, this work, um, now George Floyd is dead, you said that yesterday. You said it could have been avoided. Um, have this new path forward had happened already two years ago, in what ways could George Floyd's death have been avoided?
I mean, absolutely, like, I think what's important about George Floyd is that he was arrested, the costs were called on him for twenty dollars. Twenty dollars, a bill, you know what I'm saying, like, a bill? Like, that's how, like, if, if George had actually gotten a livable job, right? Like, a living wage and like quality housing and, and insurance and whatever he needed, like, that could have been avoided, he would have never been up there like that, you know? And I think that oftentimes we shame people for being poor, um, in these situations, but it's like, no, people are just trying to literally feed themselves, literally feed themselves and house themselves. And I think that's what's really, really, really critical, you know? And if two years ago, like, it's not just about George Floyd, like, we might not also have hundreds of people sleeping in tents during the winter, like, if we started this action then, and so that's why we have to start it now. Cause if we don't, there's gonna be another George, but there's also hundreds more who are gonna, who are gonna go hungry, who are getting a shitty education, you know, like, that is what we're talking about. We're talking about something growing, and that's what the most exciting piece of it all is.
Right, and it's all the people growing and imagining a new future and a new alternative to, to what we see. We see, uh, I think we touched on this a little bit yesterday, maybe even, um, where it's like, yeah, we see like people's ambulance coming up, we see people, people, you can go shopping at Thirty-Eighth and Chicago for free right now. Um, those types of community things, is that what's gonna replace the police? Or what specifically are the alternatives?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I think first of all, we don't know all of them. And I'm never gonna lie to folks to say that we don't, and that's an intentional thing. They've ruined our imagination and told us that policing is the issue. We have to change our imagination, you know, we have to change what's possible. And I think concretely, yes, absolutely, it's actually putting investments in things like making sure everybody has food, making sure everybody has housing, um, really thinking about, and, and honestly, being in process together about, okay, so how do we wanna keep each other safe? What are the ways that we wanna address harm? Cause harm is gonna happen. Um, but how do we do that without sending racists with guns and no, you know, um, no accountability into our communities? That's not the solution. Um, and I think that folks are talking right now about what that solution is.
And so, nine city council members showed up and sort of said the same thing you're saying. Dismantling the police department is their aim now. How did that happen?
That happened because of organizing. That happened because of Harriet Tubman, that happened because of Malcolm X, that happened because of Huey P. Newton, that happened because of Ella Baker, that happened because of Marsha P. Johnson, that happened because of Ms. K. Noor and Eluchio Mioga, and Hani Ali and Sophia Benrude and Artesia Sabaos. Um, that happened because of all of the Black Visions members and all of the members of Reclaim the Block who for the last two years have been calling on our city to do this, that's why. Because we're organizing, we're not unruly protesters, we're not, uh, we have a plan, we have a clear action, and we're also, um, feeding the energy of our community. You know, all of the folks who took to the streets the last few weeks, like, any tactic that they did, like, I have no shame in that, and I support all the tactics, you know? And, and we have to get organized because we, we have to make a plan together, and that takes community organizing, and that's why we're here.
Yeah, um, you bring up a really good point about tactics. There was a ton of tactics shown in the last two weeks. There was the youth on the streets burning the precinct, there was, uh, weird, wild stuff that was happening throughout the neighborhood where other things were getting burnt, but then there's also the fundamental organizing that you're talking about, where you're organizing with city council members. Can you talk about just like that approach a little bit more of how the diversity of tactics have maybe now pushed even city council members to stay there for the disbandment of the MPD?
Absolutely, well, the young black people who unapologetically got in the streets, especially last week, they got us here, they got us, you know, national attention that meant that the city council members couldn't ignore our demands anymore. And then I think folks who have been organizing around this issue were really able to flank them and to support them in what their cries were. Um, but, you know, we've been on nightly calls with the council members, training them, educating them about what we are talking about. We've been talking to, today was a community training on abolition, you know? So that's all of the things that we, we got here.
Any last words, I know you're in the middle of organizing.
I know, I'm getting people to say, hey, come on. Um, you know, fuck 12, fuck MPD, um, believe in vision, believe in yourself. We, we are the only ones who keep us safe.
Thank you, appreciate it. We heard from Candace Montgomery. Looks like they're gonna do the closeout in a minute. There's still community conversations happening. Phil? How are you, man? Yeah, yeah, how are you?
I'm alright, I'm not people from New York to say me, you're the corn, right, and everything, yeah, man.
Uh, nice, from New York, huh? That's nice, man. Alright, yeah, let me give you one of our cards too.
Sure, for sure. What, what you think going after this? Do you think for friends, or what's going after this?
Um, going here from Chicago, talking all the time, so I have to, I have to take care of some personal things or else I don't be up there, but I think up there is.
Alright, y'all, come on back together. When I say black lives, you say matter. Black lives, black lives. When I say black lives, you say matter. Black lives, black lives. Alright, so I know we're having some really deep and powerful community conversations. I want y'all to know that this is what our future is gonna feel like, that this is gonna be part of our regular practice. You know, like, we don't live in a democratic world right now, but we can surely ensure and build democracy, and that's what this is. So shout out to y'all for being here, shout out to y'all for rolling up your sleeves and digging into these hard conversations, I appreciate y'all. Um, now I am blessed to introduce Junada. Um, Junada should be an inspiration to all of us, but is a visionary artist, um, and like, community auntie kinda, like, yeah, like, kinda, it's like something there, yeah. Um, who is gonna read a poem for us, um, that honestly really changed my perspective in this work. Um, and shout out to all the artists, because y'all are the reason that we have this vision in the first place. Um, come on, more love for the artists, y'all. I know y'all are retweeting and sharing their pictures for free. More love to the artists, y'all, let's go, let's go.
This is Juanada, author of a new book.
Hello? Oh, shit. Um, hey, everyone. I just wanna tell y'all I love y'all. And, um, I think that we deserve better than police. You know, like, I've lived with, with police my whole life in my schools, in my neighborhoods, harming people I love and not doing anything that we need. So, I wrote a poem, five years ago actually, um, around the time Michael Brown was murdered, um, around like, what is the energy spirits that we need in our communities and streets? Instead of people who got guns from communities that don't understand us, who have repressed white supremacist tendencies, we don't need it. So this is a poem, um, called Could We Please Give the Police Departments to the Grandmothers? Could we please give the police departments to the grandmothers? Give them the salaries and the pensions and the city vehicles, but make them a fleet of vintage Corvettes, Jaguars and Cadillacs with white leather interior, diamond in the back, sun rooftop, dig in the seam with the gangsta lean. Let the cars be badass. You would hear the old school jams like Patti LaBelle, Anidi Baker, Prince, Al Green. You would hear Sweet Honey and The Rock harmonizing on We Who Believe in Freedom Will Not Rest, bumping out the speakers, and they got the booming system. If you up to mischief, they will pick you up swiftly in their sweet ride and look at you until you can't shame and look down at your lap. She asks if you are hungry and you say yes, and of course you are. She got a crown of dreadlocks and on the dashboard you see brown faces like yours, shaved, buttered, and loved up. And there are no precincts, just love temples that got spaces to meditate, eat delicious food, mangoes, blueberries, next to reeds, cornbread, peas and rice, fried plantain, yams, greens, pecan pie, lemonade. All that good food, things that make your mouth water and soul arrive. All the hungry bellies know warmth, all the children expect love. The grandmas help you with homework, practice yoga with you, and teach you how to make jambalaya and coconut cake from scratch. When you're sleepy, she'll start humming and rub your back while you drift off. A song that she used to have the record of when she was your age. She remembers how it felt like to be you and be young and not know the world that good. Grandma is a sacred child herself, who just circled the sun enough times into the ripeness of her cronehood, and she wants your life to be sweeter. When you wildin' out cause your heart is broke, or you don't have what you need, the grandmas take your hand and lead you to their gardens. You can lay down amongst the flowers, grasses, roses, dahlias, irises, lilies, collards, kale, eggplants, blackberries. She wants you to know that you're safe, protected, universal, limitless, sacred, sensual, divine, and free. Grandma is the original warrior, while since birth, comfortable and loving fiercely. She has fought so that you don't have to, not in the same ways at least. So give the police departments to the grandmas. They fearless, classy, actualized, blossom from love. They wear what they want and they say what they please, believe that. They wouldn't be noise citations when the grandmas ride through our streets, blasting Stevie Wonder, Nina Simone, Marvin Gaye, Alice Coltrane, Jimi Hendrix, Kara Swan, all that good music. The kids go to hula hoop to it and sell her lemonade made from heirloom pink lemons and maple syrup. The car is solar powered and carbon footprintless. The grandmas designed the technologies themselves. At night, they park the cars in a circle so all can sit in them with the roofs down and look at the stars, talk about astrological signs, what to plant tomorrow based on the moon's mood and help you memorize Audre Lorde and James Baldwin quotes. She always looks you in the eye and acknowledges the light in you with no hesitation or fear. And grandma loves you fiercely forever. She sees the pain in our bravado, the confusion in our anger, the depth behind our coldness. Grandma knows what oppression has done to our souls and is gonna change it one love temple at a time. She has no fear. Thank you, everyone. Thank y'all for coming out here and fighting to end this atrocity of our society. This is what a good ancestor looks like, being up in the park right now and resisting the police state. Also, if you would like to support my work, um, I got some po, um, some posters of this poem, parts of the poem over there, so just if you're interested. My name is Junada, J-U-N-A-U-D-A, and I love y'all, and like, Black Lives Matter, defund the police, refund our communities.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we, we kinda forgot about pandemic, we had to give some love. It was worth the risk. Um, so, uh, last but certainly not least, I wanna call up Alucci. Alucci. So if folks were attending the protest right now, uh, um, the other, sorry, yesterday, Alucci was helping at the head of that, was, was there with me, uh, making sure that we held, uh, our mayor accountable, and, you know, basically grounded him back to his home. Um, so, Alucci, to you, my friend.
Yeah, yeah, hey, y'all. Ooh, uh, my name is Alucci, use any pronouns. Originally from St. Paul, shout out to St. Paul right now, a little bit, a little bit of St. Paul. But you know, I live in the Minneapolis, I, I, I rap the six one two. Um, so, they helped me out here to be a little hype, right? Cause, you know, as a Leo, I can be a little hype. Um, I wanted to, I actually wrote some shit down, so let me read that real quick. Um, first of all, thank y'all for being here, right? Like, if it wasn't for community, we wouldn't be at this moment. So, give a huge shout out to yourselves in this moment. I think y'all can be a little louder. So today is June seventh, twenty twenty. Today, the Minneapolis City Council announced that they were dismantling the Minneapolis Police Department. You know, you gotta say, say things in threes for emphasis, for emphasis. Minneapolis City Council, this, uh, Minneapolis City Council announced that they will dismantle the Minneapolis Police Department. The Minneapolis City Council announced that they're going to dismantle the Minneapolis Police Department. Like, that is, that is not just historic for Minnesota, that is not just historic for the United States, but this is historic for the whole world. Councilmember Allison, I call him Jeremiah, um, he said that black people live outside of the United States, which is true. My parents were born and raised in Nigeria, shout out Nigeria, hey, Ibo Kudu. But, we have to know that the fight here is also for the fight over there. And we have to know that even though the uprising started in Minneapolis, it's going on everywhere, y'all. It's going on in DC, it's going on in Atlanta, it's going on in Colombia, in Nigeria. And what a better way, what a better fucking day than the day that the Purple One was born, y'all. Prince always said that the revolution is gonna start in Minneapolis. And look at this, my niggas! Look at this, my niggas! And you know, my non-niggas too, my non-niggas too, y'all here as well. But this is, this is incredible. This is so much momentum, so much pain, so much anger, so much sadness that we have had to endure for centuries, right? But with that, so much joy, so much appreciation, so much love, so much gratitude, so much happiness, so many happy tears, right? Yesterday, we saw thousands of Minneapolitans, thousands of Minnesotans come together and tell Mayor Fry, we don't want no Minneapolis Police Department. We got to hold him accountable, y'all, to his face. And then today, stark difference, we have nine city council members who are all vowing to disband the Minneapolis Police Department. So I just want y'all to sit with that, and I also want y'all to know, just because we dismantle MPD does not mean that dismantles white supremacy. That does not mean that white people, y'all, get to take a break. That does not mean we stop censoring black people in every conversation that we have. I need y'all to continue reading, I need y'all to continue following black leadership, and I need y'all to continue learning about what intersectionality means, what abolition means, what capitalism means, right? What imperialism means. So that we can actually gain a liberatory future where black people are actually liberated. And I also want y'all to be part of this process, because what we're trying to build is community-led safety. And what is community-led safety without the community? Just another police force. Just another police force, if y'all didn't know. So y'all need to be in these conversations with us. I need to listen to every single Minneapolitan and say, "What does community safety look like to you?", right? And I also want y'all to just think, if your council member was on this stage today, I need y'all to call them, I need y'all to text them, I need y'all to go to their houses if you know where they live, if they're in their neighborhood, and thank them because this shit right here is brave as fuck. This shit right here is brave as fuck. The first city in the United States of America, y'all. So I'm, I love chants, I'm gonna do a little chant for them, for all the city council members who are still here. It's the "We Love You" chant. It gets people hyped, we're just gonna do that for like two seconds. So, "We love you, we, we love you." "Hey, we love you, we, we love you." "We love you, we, we love you." "Ah, we love you, we, we love you." Yes! Thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all so fucking much. So close today. We need y'all to talk to your community members who are not here right now. If your city council member was not here right now, why, ask them why. Why Kevin Reich? Why Manayel Palmasano? Why Lisa Goodman? Why aren't y'all here today standing with community? Can y'all, can y'all do that for me? I believe in enthusiastic consent, can y'all do that for me? So again, we wanted to thank you for coming out. We wanted to thank you for your words, for your energy, and know that the revolution started here and it will end here and we are here together, y'all. Thank you, thank you so much for coming out, y'all.
Again, we're here live in Minneapolis at Powderhorn Park. The event has just wrapped up. Uh, here, let me give you, I got some, uh... Yep, yep. I just wanted to thank you guys so much for the reporting you guys have been doing. I've been following it, just discovered you guys a couple weeks ago. And thank you.
Appreciate that, man. My name is Nico. Thank you. Trying to find my, uh... Here, I'll just hold it because I cannot find my hand sanitizer, I just had it.
It's alright, no worries.
Alright, cool. Um, so, you've been around, how long you been, you've been a Minneapolis citizen your whole life, eh?
Yep, I'm 34 years old. Southside Minneapolis, born and raised right here in my indigenous Dakota Territory, uh, Dakota and Boricua. And, um, yeah, I mean, these are my ancestral lands. Um, and yeah, that's, that's, yeah, I'm holding it down, been holding it down my whole life.
Yeah, yeah. What did you just, were you here during this event?
Yes.
What did you just witness?
Uh, I witnessed a piece of history that's really powerful and profound, right here on Prince's birthday. Um, nine of the thirteen, it's thirteen, right? Thirteen city, twelve city council members, so the majority of the city council members of the city of Minneapolis have voted to dismantle and defund the Minneapolis Police Department. Um, and this is a very impactful and important place to be simply because, you know, this whole uprising started here, um, right in South Minneapolis, um, you know, and I mean, it's been, I mean, it's been an ongoing thing, of course, police brutality has existed, you know, arguably since the beginning of this so-called nation here on stolen, uh, stolen land on Turtle Island. Um, but for it to be here in my own hometown and see all of this happen on our land is really powerful, it's really special. Um, there is a lot of resistance, there's still a lot of work to be done, of course, protecting our communities. Um, there's a lot of things that came up in the discussion, um, not just here today, but throughout this whole experience, you know, um, as we, as we mourn the, you know, the death of George Floyd and those four cops who murdered him, I'm not going to say their names, um, but the four Minneapolis, former Minneapolis police officers that murdered him, I mean, there's been a lot of conversations going on about what it looks like to police our own people and keep our own, uh, people safe through our own community and public safety. Um, I have been working directly with, um, with the AIM Patrol over in the Phillips Community and we have, this is, and also folks on the North Side and all over the Twin Cities have been protecting their own communities and it's been far more effective than what the police have been, have been doing. And this is without, like, funding, this is without tax money coming in, this is simply people who are compassionate about keeping their neighborhood safe, coming together and doing that in a good way. And so, um, you know, like I said, we were, we were out protecting native organizations and businesses, um, because native people, you know, like, we're, we're in full solidarity with the black, with the black community because the two, the two demographics of, of people in the United States that are getting murdered by police, um, the most are the black and the native communities out here. And so I think it's especially important that we show, show up for each other and we show solidarity. Um, but the first week of the whole uprising, you know, the whole native community was under attack and, and there are a lot of threats going around about white supremacists coming through. And so we connected with a lot of members of, of the indigenous communities and we connected with the AIM Patrol to patrol our own blocks, keeping very close communication with each other. And if you go over to Franklin Avenue and if you go over to the native community, you see that there really wasn't hardly anything that got burned down. Um, you know, a lot, most of the businesses are going to be, and this goes beyond just the native community, I mean, it's that native corridor where if you go down, like, there's a Somali, uh, uh, corner store that's going to be able to reopen, no problem. You see like Maria's Cafe is going to be able to reopen, no problem. And it's because the community in the neighborhood is, is taking care of it and it shows you more and more, it's even, it's more and more evident that we do not need the Minneapolis Police Department. As a, as a person who has been brutalized by the Minneapolis Police Department, several occasions I've been assaulted by the Minneapolis Police, I understand the hardship and, and I am here in full solidarity with the black community because they are, you know, they're at the forefront of the movement, they're, um, the black community is leading this movement right now. And we are here as indigenous people on, um, you know, on our, our indigenous territories to let the world know that we completely support, um, this movement for, for justice and for abolishing the police.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, I, I like that you brought up the community patrol, that's already happened. I saw Division of Indian Work, a whole bunch of people was out there during one of some of the roughest nights and it was, it was real, like, there was a lot of pandemonium happening.
Yeah, I was actually out there with a crew of, uh, you know, so we called in a lot of our indigenous warriors that we work with doing, fighting against the oil industry and, and oil pipelines and oil infrastructure. And they, they got called in to come in and, um, um, help protect native businesses as well. And we were, we were out there at the, at the DIW. And trust me, like, we were being targeted as, as, uh, looters and rioters when we were simply there to protect because that's what we do.
By the state.
Yeah, totally. And so, so by, by the police and by the, the riot cops and whoever else, you know, um, they were, they were, the thing is their training is so poor is that they don't know how to distinguish between someone who is protecting their own building and their own community and someone who's rioting because they're coming, they're coming at it from a racist lens and they just think, they think every one of us are, you know, they think we're all criminal. And so that's because they're not from the communities, they can't distinguish. When you got a, a police force that's 94% not from the community here in Minneapolis, you're going to get a disconnect that, that allows for that type of, um, you know, for that type of, um, miscommunication and lack of understanding to the point where they can't distinguish. And so they're shooting, they're shooting rubber bullets at us, flashbangs, even like, they even shot some live rounds at us and we had to run into Powderhorn Park to take cover while these helicopters were searching for us and we didn't even do anything other than protect the land and protect, um, native businesses from getting burned down. And so that's the climate that we're dealing with and that's how much, um, that shows you, even with just the police brutality that's already been happening for hundreds of years, it also reiterates the fact that they are still inflicting even more violence on us when they're, they're supposed to be out here keeping us safe during a quote-unquote riot. And I like, I mean, I refer to it as an uprising, you know what I'm saying? But like, even in those scenarios where they're called in to protect people, they are still harming and hurting people, people are losing their eyes, people are, you know, like getting, getting permanent injuries, you know what I mean? And so it's a really hard thing to watch, but just, you know, my heart goes out to all those people who, who have been affected by it and who have taken those, you know, taken those, those hits, you know what I'm saying? Um, but yeah, I mean, I could go on and on, but, um, but yeah, I appreciate y'all for, for, you know, for, of course, Unicorn Riot is a fam, you know what I'm saying? So I appreciate y'all always for, for being on the ground. Um, we've also been on the ground, just like, you know, trying to get an accurate, uh, account of the atrocities that we're witnessing, um, and the, the violent police repression that we continue to see over and over again, you know? And it, and it brings up a lot for people, you know, for a lot of people that, that, a lot of frontline people who have been there throughout all kinds of different movements, whether it's police brutality or fighting against pipelines or, or whatever, whatever movement, it's reopening and re-triggering so many different levels of trauma, especially for people like me who've left with permanent injuries from being on the front line and using those tactics and these police using these, these super harmful quote-unquote less lethal, um, rounds that can actually really kill somebody. I mean, if you hit somebody in the neck with one of those like impact munitions or whatever it is, you can kill somebody with that, you know? And so they're lethal, like, I think, I think it's important for people to also understand that the weapons that they are using are escalating the danger that they are supposedly, uh, trying to protect the, the tax-paying citizens from, you know? So there's a lot of irony there and there's a lot of, it's very backwards and, you know, I'm just really happy right now because we have a city council that's, you have city council members that like at one point were pushing, I won't say no names right now, but you know, there's city, city council members up here who pushed for the expansion of the, of the Minneapolis Police Department who, who now became abolitionists, you know what I mean? And so, you know, we're seeing some change, um, and just to see this moment in history to come down here and watch the majority of the city council members, you know, vote to abolish the police, defund the police is such a beautiful sight, it gives me hope. I have a lot of different feelings that I'm feeling as far as like this whole movement, sadness, anger, you know? Um, but, you know, to balance that sadness and anger, you also have the spirit of the resistance that's within so many people, especially our young people, our young black people, trans, queer, LGBT, uh, communities, you know what I mean? Holding it down, leading this movement, it's such a beautiful sight to see and so I'm incredibly inspired right now, it feels good. There's a lot of work, you know, just like Lucci said, you know, there, this is not going to end white supremacy and I have a feeling that there's going to be, you know, a, a reaction to all of this. Um, I feel like, you know, if, and hopefully they do, those four, uh, terrorist murderer officers who murdered, uh, George Floyd, um, if they get convicted and thrown into prison, I feel like there's going to be a, you know, potentially another, another wave of white supremacy, um, and, uh, white violence, uh, inflicted on our community. So I think it's important for us to be mindful of that, to think about what ways, what are the different ways we're going to be, um, what, what are the different strategies we're going to use to keep ourselves safe from that? I think, um, I think we already learned a lot of what that looks like and I think we're going to be better if there's going to be another wave of that coming through because there is a very, you know, there's a, there's a possibility for that, you know what I mean? But, you know, we're not afraid, the people have the power, we're going to protect our communities and, you know, we're going to continue to stand with, uh, with our black community, Black Lives Matter, you know, and everybody go follow Black Visions Collective because they're holding it down on the forefront. Um, and yeah, that's, that's where I'm at.
Sweet, can I ask you real quick? Um, I want to add on, the Division of Indian Work, from my understanding is they even had, like the elders there even had permission to be there to protect the business, written from the governor, from my understanding, and the National Guard totally disobeyed that? Did you know about that side of things or no?
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was permission, but the thing is like, even with, there was permission even from, from the mayor over at Little Earth for, for the people to hold down their own blocks and they still came in and swept through and, and pushed. So they're not even following their own commands from their own, you know, hierarchical systems that they supposedly abide by and obey or whatever, you know what I'm saying? And so, yeah, like it doesn't, I didn't, I didn't know of that specifically, but it doesn't surprise me at all, you know, because we watch it happen, you know, like, uh, uh, all of this, and it goes back to all of this, like, it's just like the reform, you know, like all of these different levels of reform that the police have went, went through and have just like not taken it serious. And that's the, one of the biggest reasons why police reform is not going to work and abolition has to work because the police are not... Telling them in a serious tone to actually go out there, it could be just them saying that because it sounds good, you know? And so, so it, it looks good on paper or it looks good in the media or whatever else, you know, it is, but they're not following that, the police never follow, follow the rules, you know? And so I'm not surprised, you know? I'm just happy that, that we were able to save so much. Um, you know, like I said, the sadness is there, the heartbreak is there, you know, I went, I went over in my own community, um, Lake and Mini Ha Ha, you know, a few days ago to check out the devastation and the aftermath, you know? And, and one view I'm looking over and I'm like, wow, like, you know, Adesababa burned down, you know what I'm saying? Uh, uh, you know, McGeezy, uh, damaged, our, our local post office burned down, we watched all that happen, you know? Heartbreak, sadness, turn around, I look at the third precinct and I say, wow, this is inspiring, this is beautiful, this is the people that put their bodies and their lives on the line to take back, you know, what really, to reclaim, to reclaim and take back what really belongs to us because we are the people who are paying taxes, we are the ones that are paying, we're not even paying it, they're taking it, like, like the people, the majority of the people haven't had the, the choice, they're just like, yo, most people, especially... Work is ordinary law, you know? And they pay taxes and, and this money goes to a terrorist organization that has been, that has been terrorizing our communities, you know what I'm saying? And so, you see that, it's been... This has been like the epicenter of, of the revolution, it all started here. So to see that happening here on Dakota Territory, being in solidarity with, um, with our black community, um, and being here, um, it, it's just a, it, it's so inspiring, you know? And it's hard not to get emotional, but it's inspiring, it's beautiful and I know revolution is going to happen as long as we continue to show up, you know? And, and I've been, you know, we've been utilizing our resources and, and helping patrol, patrol native communities, it seems like things have calmed down over there. And so now it's like my, you know, where I'm at right now is like, hey, whatever I can do to be an accomplice to, to black people, um, here in Minneapolis and all across the states and all across the world, you know, that's what I'm trying to do. Um, I'm here as, uh, you know, as someone who's ready, as a non-black indigenous Latinx person, I am here to put in the work, um, to, to help build solidarity and, and work towards, you know, seeing a just world for, for the black community, indigenous people, communities of color, all people all across Turtle Island and all across the world.
Thank you all for all that, um, thank you for the time. Where can people, I know you're an artist, I want to, I want to give you space to say that and where can people find your music?
Yeah, for sure. My name is TwoForOne, um, you can go to twoforone.com, that's T-U-F-A-W-O-N dot com. And then you could also follow me on all the social media platforms, all of my music is there. Um, you can go to, go to my Instagram right now, um, it's just TwoForOne, T-U-F-A-W-O-N. It's all there, check me out. And, uh, yeah, thank you for having me, I appreciate you.
We've witnessed, uh, pretty historic, county city council members, um, all of them saying that they will push to defund and dismantle the Minneapolis Public, Minneapolis Police Department. They gave ways and means to do that by changing some of the budget process and the policies. Um, if you want to see what happened, we have it split into two streams, sorry, there was a... Between that, um, we will continue to, to document what's happening around the George Floyd killing here in Minneapolis and elsewhere. We were live, uh, we were tweeting from Philly the other day, we've been tweeting from Denver as well. Uh, check out our Twitter, youare underscore ninja, check out our Instagram, unicorn dot riot, check out our YouTube and Vimeo, we are unicornriot ninja on the internets. If you have the financial privilege to support independent nonprofit media that's horizontally organized with no bosses, uh, you can go to unicornriot ninja slash donate. If you would like to also support in other means necessary, you could change, you could share our work, talk about, um, what you've learned or what you've seen in our work and our conversations with people, uh, and their conversations with us and so, and our documentation. So thank you again. Again, we will, we will continue to be, um, out here in the streets of Minneapolis right now on 38th and Chicago, there's a lot of people there going on. Um, we probably will... Um, we probably will not be live up there, uh, tonight, but we will be back around tomorrow in the next days. Uh, we might be live tonight, we don't know, but probably not, don't expect it very much. Again, peace you all, thank you for joining and hope you all have a good rest of the weekend and stay safe. Love you, peace.